Good afternoon, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, as well as the other members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. My name is Tom Reynolds. I live in Cape Elizabeth. I’m a pediatric neurologist at Barbara Bush Jones Hospital at Maine Medical Center. I have the unique privilege and responsibility of caring for children with neurological problems, as well as advocating for the neurological health of our most vital asset, the children of our state. Unfortunately, I’ve had the experience of managing both the acute and chronic complications of vaccine-preventable illnesses in infants and children, as detailed in the written summary, the written testimony I have just submitted. Imagine, if you will, the following scenarios. Scenario one: You are a young parent with a toddler in daycare. One morning, your toddler seems a little fussy, but is not obviously sick or with fever, so you drop him off at daycare as usual. Four hours later, you get a panicked call from the daycare provider. Something is wrong. Your son went down for a nap, but was difficult to arouse, and when he did wake up, he couldn’t move his right arm or leg and wasn’t able to talk. 911 was called, and your son is on the way to the hospital. By the time you arrive, your child has been intubated to help him breathe, and he’s being transferred to the PICU. You meet briefly with a pediatric intensive care doctor, and myself, the neurologist, and are told that we must urgently get an MRI scan. Ninety minutes later, I return from the MRI with your child and inform you that there has been a major stroke, and that we will do everything we can to ensure he survives. However, his temperature continues to rise, he begins having seizures, and he breaks out in the typical rash of chickenpox, and we inform you that the virus, which could have been prevented by a vaccination, is the cause of this very severe brain disease. Scenario two: It is the year 2026. You are the representative in the main house for your town. You hear about a family in your community that desperately needs help. The family has two middle-school-aged children, and one of them has developed subacute sclerosing panencephalitis. You quickly Google this term and discover that it is a long-term complication of having previously had measles. It turns out that this family’s children both had measles during an outbreak in 2019, when community vaccination rates dipped, and a visitor from Washington unknowingly triggered a measles outbreak when he was traveling here as a tourist. The family didn’t really have a reason not to vaccinate their children originally, but they were hesitant about vaccines when the kids were young because of misinformation spread on the Internet, so they opted out of vaccines under a philosophical exemption. Both of the children survived the initial measles infection, and the family thought they were in the clear. But a year ago, their 13-year-old son began appearing depressed. He then developed progressively worsening balance problems, uncontrollable movements, before finally progressing last week to frequent seizures. He’s currently in the PICU at Barbara Bush Jones Hospital. He recently underwent testing that confirmed there has been reactivation of the measles virus in his brain, producing this condition. The family has discovered that their child will die within the next several weeks to months. You then realize with horror that this tragedy could have been prevented by ensuring higher community vaccination rates for families who are otherwise misinformed by the anti-vaccination movement. I think long and hard about these two scenarios. The first scenario has already occurred in our state and communities right around us in recent years. The second scenario is right around the corner for our state, and you have the power to prevent this by ensuring improved community vaccination rates by voting yes on this bill. Thank you for your time and opportunity to share my position on this. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doctor. Are there any questions? Thank you for coming today, and thank you, constituent of mine. Okay, so we’re back on track to neither for nor against. That’s Elizabeth Malone. That’s neither for nor against for 798.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, my name is Betsy Mahoney, and I represent the Board of Directors of the Autism Society of Maine. I’m also the parent of a 27-year-old son with autism spectrum disorder and intellectual disabilities. The Autism Society of Maine is neither for nor against this bill. The Autism Society of America, our parent organization, is aware of the ongoing public discussion surrounding the use of vaccines. They affirm that there has never been any credible scientific or medical evidence linking vaccines with autism. In fact, robust scientific research and the overwhelming consensus of the medical community conclude that vaccines are safe, effective, and life-saving. The Autism Society of America and the Autism Society of Maine encourage parents to discuss any concerns about vaccines with their child’s physician. And I’ve included some references, although you probably have a lot of those already. I would just say in conclusion, that as a mother of a son with autism, I can assure you that I was concerned about, 20 years ago, about the fact that I vaccinated my son may have caused his problems. I did some reading on the subject and quickly discovered there is no scientific basis for asserting the connection between vaccines and autism. And I can say retroactively that if I knew then what I know now, I would have done exactly the same thing, and I’ll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Senator Puleyak.
Thank you for your testimony. My question is pretty straightforward, and that is, if there is the opinion of the National Autism Society that there is no correlation, why is the testimony neither for nor against not in favor of?
I think it’s because that we’re respecting people’s disagreements or varying views on this, and we think that the emphasis should be on parents talking to their physicians. I mean, obviously, I didn’t write the -- I didn’t come up with that policy, but I believe that that’s why it is. And again, we think it’s really important for people to communicate directly with their physicians.
I think, are there any other questions? Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, so, again, asking back to in support of LD-987. Is Tony Biszinski, Daniel Gorden-Stevens here? Please come into the room. And we’re going to move to opposition of LD-987. Laura Blaisdell, John Bancroft, Peter Micho, and Eric Brekey.
Senator Millet, Tony Biszinski, and Daniel Gorden-Stevens, you’ve already passed those.
So, why don’t you go ahead, since you are here?
Senator, it’s a little bit confusing, because I signed up to testify in favor of 798 and against 987.
Right.
I would be happy to testify now or to wait.
Well, we happen to have gotten you on the opposition, so if you would like to testify in both manners, I think that that would be okay with the committee.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, members of the committee. My name is Peter Micho. I’m General Counsel of the Maine Medical Association. I reside in Reed Field. I’m also the Chair of the Maine Immunization Coalition Steering Committee. And may I add, I’m also a registered nurse licensed to practice in Maine. Both the Maine Immunization Coalition and the Maine Medical Association strongly support LD-798 and oppose LD-987. I’m not going to tell you what I wrote in my testimony, because I can’t read that fast, but a couple of points I need to make. There was a claim made in a floor sheet that was distributed in the House, I don’t know about the Senate, that, quote, “LD-798 is a vaccine sales bill sponsored by the pharmaceutical industry.” I can assure you, that is not the case. The bill was written, in part, by Representative Tipping, and in part by me. My authorship was pretty simple. XYZ is repealed. But neither one of us is sponsored by the pharmaceutical industry. And I did ask Representative Tipping to be sure. As far as the medical questions, I will leave those to the physicians. May I suggest that doctors are in a much better position to say what doctors can and cannot do. You’ve heard testimony, and in that floor sheet, it was stated that doctors can’t do this and can’t do that with regard to medical exemptions. The practice of school nurses has been to accept a physician’s written statement that immunization against one or more of the diseases may be medically advisable. That’s the language of the statute, it’s the language of the rule. The rule goes on to include a list of exemptions that may be used. I checked with the DHHS, I checked with the Department of Education, I checked with school nurses, I checked with pediatricians. They all told me the same thing, that list is not exclusive. Physicians may write simply, “In my medical opinion, child X should not be immunized for disease Y or for any diseases, because it is medically inadvisable.” That’s good enough. That’s accepted by the school nurses. Let’s remember that this bill is very simple and limited in its scope. It repeals two exemptions, both non-medical. This bill does not mandate the vaccination of a single person in this state. Those mandates for school attendance, for healthcare employment, have been in place for years. This bill doesn’t change that. Furthermore, this is not a bill about the science and the medicine of vaccines, but there will be plenty of physicians here, pediatricians and others, to testify on that, because it seems to be a topic of conversation when we’re discussing this. A couple of other points I’d like to make. First of all, school attendance requirements.
We need you to wrap up, please.
Yes.
On this -- you testified on both, correct?
Yes.
So, you could just wrap up, please.
I will.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Maine Medical Association, on behalf of the Maine Immunization Coalition, and on behalf of my uncle, Camille Micho, who in 1955 was a 30-year-old widower with two young children, after the potato harvest, thought he had strained his back, so he went to the doctor. Four days later, he was dead of polio. I’m old enough to remember that, many folks here are not. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, Ms. Blaisdell, Mr. Bancroft, and Mr. Brekey, I see you are here, and I don’t see the others, so would you like to come to the podium?
It’s good to see you all.
And I apologize, it’s Senator Brekey. That’s the Honorable Senator Brekey.
I appreciate that, Senator Millet.
Not mister. There is tradition.
Well, and I -- while I made a mistake myself today, I actually thought we were gonna -- this was gonna be in the HHS committee, so I -- thinking I was coming to my own former committee, I -- my fiancée made these little blueberry pies, but I’m not able to distribute them, but it’s good to see you all. Well, maybe you can see me afterwards, but anyway. But it’s good to see you all, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. My name is Eric Brekey, former state senator from Interscotten County and past Senate Chairman for the Health and Human Services Committee. It’s a pleasure to see you all. The question before you today is a difficult question, it’s one of force. And that’s ultimately the question behind every potential act of government. What is appropriate and effective use of force to achieve desired ends? In this case, should the state force parents to vaccinate their children? I understand the impulse when someone refuses to do what you want them to, especially when you sincerely believe it is not only for their interests, but also in everyone’s best interests. Despite all your efforts of persuasion, it can be tempting to use force, especially when you sit in those chairs and have the power to do so. But the bedrock principle of American government is restraint, the idea that force should be used only in very limited circumstances, and that in our post-Enlightenment society, we should strive to live with each other on a foundation of reason, cooperation, and liberty. Force was not needed in America to promote vaccination, as it was first becoming a popular method of fighting disease. As a live virus vaccine, the smallpox vaccine was notoriously dangerous, killing about 1 in 50 who were inoculated, but the death rate from smallpox was about 50%. So, within two generations, the American people largely moved past initial apprehensions and voluntarily adopted smallpox vaccination. There’s even a famous story of George Washington requesting Martha to get vaccinated for smallpox before visiting the military camps. Now, when similar legislation came before the HHS committee four years ago, we heard from medical professionals on both sides of the question of mandatory vaccination. All agreed that there was some risk involved in vaccination. The extent of those risks were certainly matters of debate. Some suggested that risk was very minimal, some suggested it was more. But the presence of risk itself did not ever seem to be what was debated. I personally believe where there’s risk, there must be choice, but I’m not someone who has studied medicine, so I can’t speak with any authority on the harms versus benefits of individual vaccines. I’m, however, someone who’s studied a lot of economics, and I can tell you that the economic incentive structure of the vaccine industry is, under current federal law, is something that concerns me. You know, the brilliance of our tort system is that it creates a feedback mechanism for companies whose products injure their customers or third parties, requiring them to pay out damages and creating incentives for the prioritization of safety. But because of federal law, if a vaccine malfunctions, it is not the manufacturer who pays damages, but the American taxpayers. Add to this efforts for mandates that would eliminate consumer choice, and you have a recipe for an incentive structure that places increasingly little regard on safety. To illustrate this point, imagine you are purchasing a car, and you have a choice between two options that are identical in every way. If the only difference was one company had legal liability and the other didn’t, which one would you choose? But all that aside, even if you discount those concerns and you feel the perceived dangers of non-vaccination make this appropriate, I think you also must ask the question of effectiveness. I’m coming to the very end here. For every action, there’s an equal and opposite reaction. Whether you agree with them or not, are all these parents going to give up on what they sincerely believe to be the best interest of their child, simply because we try to force them? Or are they going to retrench and fight back even harder than ever? This legislation, I don’t believe, is going to fix the problem that some hope it will. I think the use of force in this instance will only exacerbate the problem and the divide between us. If we’re going to find solutions, they’re not going to come from the cudgel. We’ll have to listen to each other and consider each other’s concerns, and that’s the only way we’ll begin to create buy-in for potential solutions. Thank you very much, and it’s -- for those of you I have served with, it’s good to see you again. For those I haven’t, it’s a pleasure to meet you today.
Thank you, Senator. So, if I understand correctly, you just testified in opposition to 798.
Yes, I did. Did I sign up for the wrong thing?
You did. You signed up.
I apologize. Well, I guess I made two mistakes today, in the wrong committee and the wrong -- it was chaotic at that table over there. I apologize, Senator.
That’s okay. I just need to make clear to folks in the audience that are listening, because we are trying to do this in a systematic way. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn’t, and so that was opposition not to 987, but rather to 798. Are there any questions?
My apologies.
Okay, you know, having shared.
I know it takes a lot of patience up there, and I appreciate your --
And going with the flow a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for your testimony.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
We are now, so interestingly, we’re now going to move back to testimony in support of LD-798. Mr. Bancole is up.
Good afternoon, Senator Millet, and Representative Cornfield, and the other members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. My name is Dr. Cola Wali Bancole, and I am the Public Health Director for the City of Portland, and I’m here to testify in support of LD-798. From being a practicing physician to now overseeing population health, I’ve seen patients and people every day whose lives have been significantly improved by the immunizations we now have available. My four BS in family medicine struggled in the pre-vaccination era with the ravages of horrible diseases that are now of only historical interest. Preventive immunizations have so changed our world that I am afraid that we no longer remember how horrible some of these diseases were. However, we must remember that immunization remains the most powerful and cost-effective means of preventing diseases in the modern era. The LD-798 bill is very important, because it will help to increase the community, or otherwise called the health immunity, among children and prevent the spread of diseases. High community immunity rates are needed to protect those who are unable to be vaccinated, such individuals who are immunosuppressed due to transplants or chemotherapy. This bill will also help reduce a phenomenon of vaccine hesitancy. The WHO, the World Health Organization, has as one of its top priorities for 2019 to address vaccine hesitancy. Low vaccination rates put main children at risk for diseases that are entirely preventable. The breakdown of community immunization can happen when there are ups, outs, or exemptions due to non-medical reasons. As reported, or as you’ve already heard from other people that testified, between January to November 2008, some of these diseases were already raising up their heads, and they’re already spreading. For example, pertussis, among 13 schools across five counties happened during that period. There was also a report of chicken pox in Deacon, Westbrook, and a case in Waterboro Middle School. There were also moms’ outbreaks in 2016 at USM Bates and Boden College, and measles case occurring in Farmington in 2017. This shows that schools are at risk of outbreaks when community immunization levels are low. If our children are not immunized, we put them and others at risk. There are lots of misinformation and perceptions on the risk of vaccination, but we must remember that the benefits of our vaccines far outweigh the perceived risk, especially for those who are ill or immunosuppressed. There are innocent children and adults who meet the public every day who would die if they were exposed to the diseases we can prevent. If everyone around them is vaccinated, they are also protected. We owe it to them, and to ourselves as a state, to achieve the highest level of protection possible. We must win the war against infectious disease, and vaccines are our most powerful weapons. We cannot win, however, if we do not use them. Leaving any of our population unprotected is like surrender to a defensible foe. We must never surrender. Similarly, the World Health Organization has warned that the world will face another influenza pandemic. The only thing we do not know is when it will hit and how severe it will be. Vaccines prevent countless deaths each year. Without them, the number of valuable human beings we will lose will be staggering. I applaud our senators and representatives for the wisdom in supporting this bill. I respectfully urge you, Senator Millet, and Representative Cornfield, and the esteemed members of this committee, to support this very important legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
You’re welcome.
Okay, next up, we have Ann Lee Hussey.
Good afternoon, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and all members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Services. My name is Ann Lee Hussey. I’m a resident of South Berwick and a Maine native. I am here to testify in support of LD-798 as a concerned citizen, an aunt, and as a survivor of childhood polio. I was born at a time when swimming pools and movie theaters closed over concerns about polio outbreaks, and I know firsthand the trauma of a vaccine-preventable disease, which is why vaccine hesitancy, as a top global health threat, terrifies me, and is the reason for me being a vaccine champion. Through my membership and road read, I’ve done just that. I have visited over 10 countries, taking part in polio eradication efforts, delivering the oral polio vaccine, working closely with my representatives in WHO, UNICEF, and CDC. And believe me, herd health immunity works. It is the only reason that we have been so successful to this point, reducing the cases of polio by 99.9% throughout the world. And now I find I must do even more in my own country, where diseases of bygone eras are again affecting communities. We are victims of our own success, in that for decades, our citizens have not seen the havoc these diseases can wreck on unprotected children, the trauma, the disabilities, and often death, until now, because of herd health immunity. But because these diseases are not common, does not justify one to skip vaccinating. It is a testament that vaccines work. I wish those who are hesitant to vaccinate their children here could talk to some of the mothers I’ve met during my travels, resistant mothers whose children have been paralyzed by polio, who wish they had made a different choice, parents whose children died from measles. Soon, we will hear similar stories within our own communities, because, as one person said earlier, these diseases truly are a plane ride away. In my travels, I witnessed outbreaks of whooping cough, measles, meningitis, and polio. And in most of these countries, the problem is access to vaccines, not parents refusing to have their kids vaccinated. The parents know the consequences if their children are not protected. I truly realize that resistant parents in Maine love their children and have their best interest at heart, but the common good approach regards all individuals as part of our larger community. The freedoms and the support we enjoy as individuals in pursuit of our own happiness are made possible by the sustained welfare of our community life. Laws are a compromise between a greater good and personal freedom. You may hunt, but there are restrictions how close you can come to my home. You have the privilege to drive on our highways, but a license is required, and we have speed limits. We vaccinate our dogs against rabies to protect them and ourselves, and we must pay taxes that in turn contribute to the common good. For society to thrive, we need to safeguard the sustainability of our community for the good of all, including our weakest and most vulnerable members, the children too young to be vaccinated, those with compromised immune system, the chronically ill and disabled. They must all be protected. A single individual’s right cannot and should not impose on the rights of others, because vaccines protect the vaccinated child and those most valuable in our communities. In closing, Maine has an enduring tradition for neighbors helping neighbors, and I ask you to act for the public good. It’s the ethical thing to do, it is the neighborly thing to do. Thank you for the opportunity to share my position on this important bill with you, and I welcome any answers, questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
I am going to take this opportunity to invite into the room Patrick O’Connor, Rachel Ortiz, Angie Kenny, Amanda Brooks, and Josh Lovelace.
Good afternoon, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and esteemed members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. My name is Casey Schwartz, and I live in Portland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this important bill. Immunization affects our whole community, children currently in school, their siblings, parents, neighbors, and friends. This issue is personal to me, because I’m the parent of a toddler who is too young to be fully immunized, and because I hope to have more children. As you will hear from medical experts, vaccine-preventable illnesses are particularly devastating for fetuses and young babies. Things that seem to be individual healthcare decisions are often not really individualized. I see this in my work as a health policy attorney. People go to work sick and spread illness, Senator Millet. Family caregivers lack support and leave the workforce. Decision not to avail oneself of safe medicine, creating conditions ripe for epidemics, similarly impacts public safety, not individual liberties. Vaccination is an appropriate condition for participating in a particularly intimate public space with particularly vulnerable people. As a parent of a toddler, I know just how quickly infectious disease spreads among children. It’s amusing, but frustrating in the context of colds and winter sniffles. It’s scary when it’s croup, and it is terrifying and enraging when it is vaccine-preventable, potentially life-threatening illnesses like measles and whooping cough. Others you will hear from today will explain why a small number of people choosing not to protect themselves can have a large impact on community risk. I’d like to tell you the effect this has had on me and my family. I’ve watched as our friends and family members, including my daughter’s grandparents, in Washington State wrestle with a measles outbreak, and have postponed visiting. I’ve seen community events canceled in our state because of whooping cough and decided against those vacation spots. The risk to my healthy two-year-old is less than others you will hear from face. If she contracted one of these diseases, she would likely recover quickly and with minimal complications. But she isn’t the whole point, even if she’s my whole point. She’s not more important than our 80-year-old neighbor or a classmate’s soon-to-arrive baby sister. She’s not more deserving of access to school than a child who’s immune-compromised or allergic to a vaccine ingredient. Most Maine parents understand this and vaccinate their children. This bill prevents the few This bill prevents the few who would choose not to from putting the rest of us at risk. According to a legal adage often attributed to Oliver Wendell Holmes, "Your right to swing your fist ends at my nose." I will leave the discussion of the constitutionality of this bill to others today, except to say that arguments on the basis of individual rights are misguided. You can respect individual healthcare decision-making without allowing people to externalize the risks of that decision onto the most vulnerable in our community. That's what Maine should do, and that's what this bill does. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Did you time your testimony, because that was remarkable?
I follow the rules.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Okay, Sarah Staffieri?
Staffieri.
Staffieri, of course.
Good afternoon, Senator Millet and Representative Cornfield, and esteemed members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. My name is Sarah Staffieri, and I'm here today in support of LD-798. I live and work in Waterville. I'm a biology instructor at Colby College. I'm the mom to a five-year-old son Gabriel and a two-year-old daughter Natalie. My son became gravely ill when he was nearly four in 2017. He was hospitalized and diagnosed with a rare autoimmune condition triggered by a virus. Just six years ago, the prognosis for his condition was terminal, with a very poor quality of life and death or organ failure within five years. Having conversations about your child's life expectancy is something a parent should never have to do. This was a devastating diagnosis, but thanks to medical science, there's a new drug available that has completely changed the future for patients like my son by controlling flare-ups of the condition. The main side effect of this drug is that he is immunocompromised to certain bacterial infections that can be prevented in others through routine childhood vaccinations like PCV-13, Hib, and MCV-4. His risk of developing these infections is 5,000 times higher than someone who does not take the drug, and this is from a published study done on the matter. This is not my thoughts on it; this is a published study on his medication. We've gotten him immunized with these vaccines multiple times, but because his medicine turns off the arm of his immune system that will respond to it, they are not effective and he has no protection. We make a hard choice as his parents, have frequent relapses and face organ failure while off the medication or stay on it and risk infection spread by unvaccinated individuals. So when people today say they are facing a hard choice about immunizing their kids to send them to school, think about our hard choices in comparison. And let me add that long before my son was sick, my children were always vaccinated, as I wanted to protect them but others in the community. Even if my child could have recovered from a vaccine-preventable illness, I would be devastated if they gave it to someone that could not. It makes sense to me that when enrolling your child in school, that you are joining a community, and as such, you should care about those beyond yourself, and that you would be putting at risk with your behavior, and if you cannot do that, that community is not for you. I never imagined, when I had conversations about the benefits of herd immunity years ago, that my child would be one of those cases that relies on it. I imagine a lot of people in this room don't put themselves in those shoes either. Gabriel starts kindergarten this fall. He is so excited, but in the pit of my stomach, I am petrified. What if the classmate next to him isn't vaccinated and passes an illness he cannot fight off? What if there's an outbreak? We know there are risks in everyday life for illness; I get that, but five days a week, eight hours a day, same classroom, breathing the same air, eating together, sharing the same supplies, this is what my son's specialists call as high-risk behavior. And even though my son's condition is rare, schools have many students, teachers, and also staff who rely on herd immunity, as others will testify to. When my son returned to daycare after his diagnosis, I was shocked, I mean jaw-open shocked, how supportive the laws were to families who had personal objections to vaccines, while nothing was there to protect my vulnerable son. I cannot communicate enough how helpless, defeated, angry, and honestly confused I am that my son managed to fight off a disease that has killed many others. Eighty percent of the people with this condition would die, and now I'm facing him dying from a vaccine-preventable illness? We've come this far with him, and I am just, it is so confusing to me that there are no laws to protect him while they're there to protect personal beliefs. I believe it is time to stop catering to less than 5% of Maine families who are putting individual and community health at risk. By supporting this bill, know you are protecting and saving the life of my son. And let me also add to this that he could have easily gotten medical exemptions for vaccines, but I fought hard. I talked to the CDC, I called doctors, and I realized that the evidence was there that he would be safe, and we got him his MMR booster, and he is doing fantastic. And so, you know, in terms of medical exemptions, it was there for me, but I chose not to take it.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions? Thank you. And Sam Zager.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and other members of the committee, thank you so much for your time today. I'm a family physician. My name is Sam Zager. I'm a family physician in Portland, speaking for Maine providers standing up for healthcare and as a board member of the Maine Academy of Family Physicians. I think I know what you would expect to hear from me today.
Thank you so much.
I'm not going to repeat testimony that is eloquently stated by others regarding the value of students attending disease-free schools or the lopsidedness of the evidence in favor of vaccines, or how horrible these diseases are. You're getting better testimony from others. I do, however, want to speak on the economic impact, because in health, as in government, nothing operates in isolation. To do important things like funding schools and marching towards universal health coverage, Maine needs money. So if one wishes to expand education, health, and social services, and/or if one wishes to reduce taxes, then you'd be interested in the following. Vaccination not only saves lives and illness, but it also saves our state boatloads of money. In the wake of a measles outbreak in Washington State, last Tuesday, the Secretary of Health, Dr. John Weissman, pointed out that vaccines save $16 for every $1 spent on vaccine. 16 to 1 savings. Furthermore, the costs, the public costs of non-vaccination or under-vaccination are increasing. The Children's Hospital in Denver, Colorado, recently released a study that showed that that state had to spend an extra $55 million due to under-vaccination, and that was up by $20 million from $35 million or so to $55 million in just two years because the rates of vaccination were plummeting during that time period. Another estimate comes from a much wider, much larger, system-wide study that was published in a very reputable journal, Health Affairs, estimating that the total economic burden of illnesses with childhood vaccines was $8.2 billion nationwide, so Maine's portion of that would be about $33 million. So the earlier estimate, it might have been an underestimate, and it could be $33 million. This study actually may have been an underestimate, and if anybody had questions, I can elaborate on that. I don't want to take more of the precious time in the room. So I'll sum up by saying vaccines are safe, effective, they save lives, and they save money. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zager. Are there any questions? Representative Cornfield.
I assume the cost is coming from children that are not vaccinated who then need hospital care?
Those are significant portions of the cost, yes. But there's also spillover costs, Representative Cornfield. Because these are communicable diseases, they can bring that home to adults. Adults can get these diseases, and then there's the lost work wages, there's the disruption in their lives, there's the ripple effects that we often see in health.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. I'm going to point out that Dr. Zager incorporated some good practice for testimonies, which is to not repeat what's already been said, and we are now almost four hours into the public hearing, and I think you might recognize that the members of this Education Committee and Cultural Affairs are humans, and we do our best to listen attentively, but as the night goes on and the hours accumulate, we get a little tired. So we want to hear everybody, but we would really encourage you to highlight new pieces of information, something that hasn't been stated before, because we're certainly going to remember that more out of your testimony than something that we've already heard in the prior four hours of testimony. So with that, I invite Patrick O'Connor to come forward.
Thank you. So I have a statement on 798 as well as 987, but I'll just let you read the brief statement for 987, if that's okay. Good afternoon. My name is Patrick O'Connor. I'm a child psychologist living and practicing in Portland, as well as a parent. I'm also here on behalf of my wife, who is an attorney specializing in clinical trials at a large pharmaceutical company. My wife and I are highly trained in interpreting clinical research and support vaccines as a public health measure. However, we stand opposed to this bill, in part because it does not provide adequate protections for families with a history of vaccine reactions. Several years ago, I learned from my physician father that my brother and I had experienced serious adverse reactions to the DTAP vaccine in infancy. While I ultimately recovered, it was my father's observation that my brother suffered permanent neurological damage. I have since learned that research over the last decade has demonstrated that these uncommon but serious reactions to vaccines are not as random as we once thought. In fact, many of these adverse events likely have a genetic basis. Based on my medical history, the risks of the DTAP vaccine clearly outweigh the benefits for my family, and it would be highly irresponsible for us to have this vaccine administered to a child. However, because my family history of reactions is limited to this one vaccine, the benefits of other required vaccines do outweigh the risks for our family. This is informed consent in action, something this bill strips away. We live in a society that has all but lost the ability to tolerate nuance in policy discussions. With regard to the vaccine issue, many who support compulsory vaccination view those who oppose these measures as a monolithic group of uneducated conspiracy theorists. I hope my situation highlights the fact that many of us who oppose this bill are informed and thoughtful people. Vaccines are safe for the vast majority of children, but not all vaccines are safe for all children. There is a distinct minority of children who are adversely affected. The research is unequivocal in supporting this assertion. As lawmakers, your charge is not only to make laws for the majority, but to consider the needs and rights of the minority as well. No child should be deprived of schooling because his or her genetics may be incompatible with a given vaccine. I'm respectfully asking you to consider amending the medical exemption in this bill to specifically include a family history of adverse events. I hope you will also think more broadly about the well-established principle of informed consent and recognize that each parent should have an opportunity to thoughtfully consider their own family medical history when making decisions regarding vaccines. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming for your testimony.
My pleasure.
We will definitely read your other one for 987. Are there any questions from committee members? Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, next up is Rachel Ortiz. No, just leave them on the decision there. Before you begin, just checking that Angie Kenny, Amanda Brooks, and Josh Lovelace. Okay, Josh, would you just mind sitting up front just so I can kind of keep track how we're doing? Okay. I'm going to also call in again in support of 987, Tony Biszinski, Daniel Grodin Stevens, Ellen Stanley, Becky, Becky Gillian, Tia Embers, and Marley Sacksman. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Sure, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Should I begin?
Yes.
Okay. Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Ortiz. I'm coming today from Bangor, Maine. I am the Critical Languages Coordinator, as well as an instructor of Spanish for the University of Maine, and I'm here today to...
You don't need to lean in.
Lean in?
No, you don't need to lean in.
Sorry, okay. I have a voice that carries up. And I'm here today to honor my son Connor, who turned 16 in January. Connor was born when I was 24 years old. It was an uncomplicated pregnancy. Sorry, I keep leaning in by habit. It was an uncomplicated pregnancy. He was born full-term, eight pounds. I breastfed for a year. We never missed a baby well check. Connor was babbling, talking, walking, running by 13 months and meeting all of his milestones. At the 15-months' well check, he received his mom's measles rubella vaccine. Everything seemed ordinary that day on our way home. That night, my son was inconsolable, a fever reaching 105, and he suffered a febrile seizure. We went to the ER where we were told he was suffering from encephalitis, or swelling of the brain. This was even visible from the fontanelle on his head, where you could see the brain bulging from the soft spot. This was the beginning of the end of normalcy I had previously known with my son. That was the day that my son was severely brain damaged. The days of him singing the alphabet to me are gone. Sorry. The days of him counting are gone. I was raising my son to be bilingual in two languages, and he could count very well in Spanish and English. Those days are gone. Hearing my son call me mom is gone, and the way he used to run to the door saying, "Ready, set, go, mama," that is gone. Our former daily routine was replaced with therapy, speech, developmental, occupational, physical. I put my career on hold as a K-12 educator to work with him every day. I took 10 years to potty-train him, walls, floors were covered with fecal matter, common occurrence each day. My son was self-injuring daily by the time puberty hit. I would bandage him daily. I put padding under all of his clothes, and I have to put a padded helmet on him every day. I sometimes have to keep him safe from himself. Two weeks ago, he went into crisis in public. I tried to protect him. He took two clumps of hair from my head. He gave me a black eye. He bit my wrists. He bloodied my face and my hands. My son will qualify for a medical exemption under this bill, but this bill requires that he got hurt first. I didn't know about the mitochondrial disorder that ran in my family until after my son had an irreparable injury. I understand why parents are hesitant to vaccinate because I have lived, I've witnessed the nightmare. No parent should be forced when what happened to my son is a potential outcome. This exists. The encephalopathy, read a vaccine insert, these are real risks. I am not making this up. By the time I learned of the vaccine injury compensation program, the statute of limitations had run out. Therefore, as a result of the immunity given to vaccine manufacturers in 1986, we will be dealing with a devastating financial fallout of my son's injuries for the rest of our lives. LD-798 is supposed to protect children while you're endangering children like my son, who have underlying conditions that have yet to be identified. This bill will force me and my husband to subject our other children to the very thing that has already devastated our lives. So please do not force my family to endure any more suffering or such a trauma. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
And the photos, you guys, that was the last photo I took of my son before his brain injury, and this is my son now, so just please understand what the illustrations were for. Thank you.
Thank you. Those will be entered. I don't know if they can do that, but I think they'll try to scan them, for those that are listening. Okay, Angie?
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. My name is Angie Kenny. My daughter, Nevea, was injured by the Vericela vaccine when she was 18 months old. Prior to getting the vaccine, she was an active, spunky toddler. In fact, she started walking a little early at 10 months old. When she was 18 months old, she received the chickenpox vaccine. Within two weeks of receiving the vaccine, we started noticing that when she would wake up from her naps, she would shake and tremble uncontrollably. Her eyes would dart back and forth, left to right, nystagmus. We took her into her pediatrician's once to maybe three times over those two weeks, where they sent us home, telling me that she could potentially have an inner ear infection that was causing her equilibrium to be off, or perhaps she had a virus. Basically, they were not sure. We went home, and we noticed that she was progressively getting worse. One morning, she woke up and she couldn't walk at all. So we took her back into the doctor's office. They set up appointments for MRIs. We saw a couple of neurologists in Bangor, and what had happened was her immune system attacked her nervous system. It completely destroyed the myelin sheath, the coating on her nerves, and she was diagnosed with acute cerebellar ataxia. We made endless trips down to Boston at the Children's Hospital, just really trying to figure out... to figure out what was going on, how long she was going to be sick. Nobody could tell us. It was more or less wait and see, go home and wait and see. When we did, when the doctor did let us know what the diagnosis was, ataxia, he saw that the pamphlet that comes along with the vaccine actually states ataxia as a known side effect of the varicella vaccine, which, as you can imagine, to a parent who thought the only possible side effects to a vaccine are maybe a little redness around the injection site, fever, a little crankiness, the list of side effects on that insert are terrifying. So the reason I'm here to speak to you guys today in opposition to this bill is I have a daughter, who is three and a half years old, and we are looking to enroll her in pre-K in the fall. She does not qualify for medical exemption, per her pediatrician, even though her sister Navea had a severe reaction to the chickenpox vaccine. So I plan on using my philosophical belief to hopefully not have to vaccinate her. Our pediatrician did report Navea's injury to VARs, which is the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, for those of you who may not know. I also contacted the National Vaccine Injury Compensation Program, and after years of waiting and working with a law firm in Boston, we were compensated. So this has been reported. It is a known side effect of the vaccine. And I'm sure, as you all know, not to repeat information, but this fund has, that has taken away the liability from the pharmaceutical companies, has paid out over $4 billion to families who have children that have been injured or worse from the vaccine. So by mandating that all children receive this vaccination to attend school, you are putting countless other children at risk of injuries like Navea, including my youngest daughter, Keenix. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Amanda?
Hi. She's passing out two different pieces of paper. My ex-husband, funny enough, he wanted to be here as well. He's an orthopedic surgeon, Dr. Jake Brooks, also has his master's in public health. And we share a daughter, four-year-old Arabella. And so that's his written testimony, as well as mine. He wishes he was here. He's in the middle of a case, and he's on call. So Senator Millet, and Representative Cornfield, and members of the Committee for Education and Cultural Affairs, my name is Amanda Brooks. I have been a practicing emergency medicine, I've been practicing emergency medicine as a physician assistant for 14 years. I decided to go into medicine because I've always had a really strong desire to help others, and I thought that being involved in the medical community was the best way to do that. I graduated magna cum laude from the University of Maine at Orno, with a Bachelor of Science in Human Nutrition, and I went on to earn my master's at University of New England in Physician Assistant Studies. I completely immersed myself in my studies and remain as passionate about patient care today as the day I graduated. So it is as a steward of our community health that I am extremely alarmed by Maine's Vaccination Exemption Removal Bill, LD-798. Mandating that all children become vaccinated, it sounds like a really good idea, but in reality, it's a fantasy in the complex world of medicine, where unintended consequences always arise. We're hearing this, these last few people that have presented. There are many questions that need to be answered before going down this road. First, I think there's an elephant in the room. What is the number of vaccine-related injuries in the state of Maine? At the federal level, we do have a Vaccine Injury Compensation Program, but there has been no real outreach to the states, including Maine. I don't believe that there's a single physician in our state trained on this program. I mean, I never even learned about the Vaccine Injury Compensation Program. But in fact, like we just heard, it has paid out over $4 billion in compensation for injuries caused by vaccines that this bill will mandate. I was also unaware that before the administration of a vaccine, your physician is supposed to give you a handout from the CDC that explains that you can get compensated if you sustain a vaccine-related injury. Do you see the problem here? If we don't have a single physician or medical professional educated on this program and how to use it, how can any medical professionals in Maine know how to recognize a vaccine injury? I believe that we need training to educate on vaccine injuries and how to diagnose them. For example, the Vaccine Injury Compensation Program's symptoms for pertussis and measles vaccine-induced encephalopathy include: change in brain functioning, loss of eye contact, not seeming to respond, not seeming to recognize familiar people or places, not responding to much other than loud shouting, and may or may not be accompanied by seizures. Needless to say, the federal government understands that vaccines, they can cause serious injury. What is the vaccine injury rate in Maine? There's no answer, because no one has systematically attempted to answer this question. Without that information, it is not possible to compare the risks and benefits of mandating vaccination.
Ms. Brooks, can you wrap it up, please?
When we look at comparing the two serious risk groups, those who will suffer complications and death from vaccine-targeted illnesses, opposed to those who suffer complications and death from vaccines themselves...
So wrapping up doesn't mean reading...
Oh, okay, sorry. Just one...
We do have, we do have...
We have no equation to work from. I believe that this conversation needs to be had before we can pass a bill requiring vaccines for all. Three more sentences. Again, I enter the realm of medicine to be a healer and to help others. I accept the Hippocratic oath, which is do no harm. How can we pass this bill without the necessary numbers to evaluate it properly? In my professional opinion, it is absurdity to say that everyone in Maine has to vaccinate, and if there are adverse outcomes, the state has no responsibility. Thank you.
So I really appreciate that you wanted to share all that information, but we have many, many people waiting to testify.
I'm sorry.
And I'm really trying to get everybody out of here as early as possible. So I'm speaking as much to you as everybody else that's in this room and listening. I have to keep you to three minutes, or there are going to be families that are stuck here until very late tonight. Even at three minutes, it's very likely that can happen, but I'm really working hard to make sure that everybody who came here today has a chance to testify when we're still, you know, energetic in attendance. So I just, please, everybody, when I say please wrap it up, please wrap it up. Okay, we're going next to...